So. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the eight commissioners regular meeting March first already. We're seeing on the agenda is public comment. So do we want to? Start off with the public comment.
Just more driveway just north of three eighteenth road, which is the one that goes to Blake. Or the soup bills down towards the bottom of the hill. The township's got a road that goes up. So we live in the second house, the old rock house up there where Bill Hanky lives up front. It was a big payborne Morton building. You folks got a bridge, I think probably a WPA bridge. That's. Not adequate anymore with today's machinery. The bridge is right, right where the road turns.
I was up there. There's no. There's no concrete or bank.
It's all concrete.
Okay.
To. Was so tall.
I was also there, sir.
He was out there.
Yeah.
No, you guys are. Anyway. The person that farms. Bill Hanky's ground out in front of me. Also farm mine last year. Planted and harvested. In the meantime, in the last two weeks, it's something always that. He's my neighbor Bill Hanky's not renting that ground to the same guy that's planting mine. So consequently. He's going to have to come up the township road to get to my place. And. This is not adequate with to accommodate. His combine or his combine.
My first thing is I don't know why it wouldn't because is it combined with duals? Dual wheel combine?
It don't matter. You gotta measure inside. From wheel to wheel. And I was out there and I made the bridge. Sorry, I'm interrupting here.
No, I'm.
But I and I measured my combine. And if I tried to cross the mine, this much of my tar would hang over the edge and I got singles. If only the max, the max that you can get out of that thing, wiggle your taper around is twelve and a half feet wide. That's the top of it.
I actually.
And combines are.
How how wide are your tires?
That's what I'm saying.
No, how wide are your tires?
The fourteen foot on the outside.
No, he wants to.
The width of the tire, actual tire.
Oh.
I mean, those tires are, I mean.
They're about that wide. So there's gonna be this much of them hanging off of both sides.
Well. I I would think that that would go over that with nobody.
I wouldn't take my machine across that.
You want to take the two hundred fifty thousand, the three hundred thousand dollar machine with the chance that you don't have it lined up, right?
Happens all the time.
The township's had a grater in that creek too, because it's too narrow years ago, lost a grater. And what really aggravates me, and I know we have different people here. But it's probably been five years ago, maybe six now. We were told, Bill Hanky was told, Dan was told, and the township was told they was gonna run a tube through that. So we can get some width to where we drive. It's not happened yet today.
Well, I mean, I've been a commissioner ever since that's happened, and that's never been brought to my attention. This is the first time that.
Well, somebody didn't make notes of it then.
Well, I mean, it wasn't brought up to us.
Right.
What are the solutions?
He's landlocked. He can't get in. He can't come in, no way, because Bill Hanky owns plum around him. And he can't get in.
I pay my taxes on it every year.
Well, we have the same situation on through roads that are are the same situation that we're already can't replace all of these tubes and bridges.
Okay. Also, my question is, how many did you mention that? How many people are landlocked like Danny?
Well, I can think.
If you're talking about a three road, you can come in. I have to go around to get to some of my land up there.
Yeah.
On three fourteen.
Well, I could take it one right off the bat, and that is the down there on two two twenty second. South of me, it's in Capioma Township, because Greg Oswald has been asking us for years. There's two. Three, there's a three ton and a five ton bridge with ground in the center that they have to cross a three ton or a five ton bridge. I mean, its weight is not width, but it's the same same principle. And we haven't been able to.
Okay, how does he get to his land? He know he don't farm it.
He crosses one of those bridges, but I mean, it's, he's making do. I mean. I mean, that's just one of the areas I can think of that the ground, the machinery has outgrown. The ability of us to keep pace with replacing all these bridges, because we have got extremely a lot of bridges with the tall banisters people can't get through. We've got weight limit issues that people can't cross. Bridges because there's two in a row and there's landlocked in between. I mean, it's, this isn't just the first issue where this isn't a policy that was trying to exclude with this one area. I mean, we've got this problem lots of different places.
Unfortunately, I represent District Three, and I talked to several of the folks living in my district also that faced the same challenges of this. And it's unfortunate that we haven't progressed with the times of the machines and in our bridge structures, but the reality is we have failing bridges. And and these issues countywide, and it's hard to pick and choose without a process. And so with it not being failing. The the feedback I'm getting based on those spans is these are all over my district, and some of the solutions that they've done is some of them just plant corn every year and don't rotate crops. Because that's the only machine that a bean combine won't fit into their field. They have to have corn. Others, fifty percent of them just use the singles, not the duals, which sounds like you're already looking at that option. Four bridges, they can't cross at all, so they've been trading like, I don't know how your relationship is. I know, I know you grow up and you rent your land to the people that you want. But I don't know if the solution of of working with your neighbor, of trying to come up with. If you would allow your tenant to to go through his place to get to yours like he has in the past, even though he chose someone different. I mean, at the end of the day, what we want to do in the seat is help you. But with the reality is when this, we're not, we have failed structures countywide, and we have these issues countywide affecting several people. We can't go by inconvenience when we're being told by farmers that that shouldn't be an issue getting to your field. And I don't want you to take that as. Out of context, like we we would love to help you, but the reality is, and we were going to pull up a screen that won't matter, but we have these all over the county that. And not enough funding. I mean, but situations like this, I can tell you, as I come to these situations, I'm trying really hard to identify funding mechanisms. Where we can write grants and try to get help and 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 pinpoint some of these areas to say, okay, you know, we've taken care of our failing ones. Now what's next? Well, this one, you know, and and kind of identify those and prioritize them. But to just say, yes, we can take care of you, unfortunately, the needs outweigh. And I'll feedback like, I know that's not going to be what you want to hear, and that's not the answer, but as a commissioner representing everyone. Like, those are some of the things that I have to weigh, you know, in decision making, unfortunately. Because I would love to say absolutely, like, what can we do to help? Let's come in and do those things. And I'm sorry, I wasn't here prior to the commitments that they promised.
As is there, is there a solution other than? Building a new bridge?
Extending the culvert would be trying to put pipe in it. I don't know that I'm a propeller to go all the way through it, but some way of trying to extend it.
Was I hearing that there could be an agreement with the landlord?
Well, no, we'd have to talk to Bill to make sure, because I'm sure we'd be off the right away to make the slope right and make sure that he was on board with it.
Right.
So.
Do you think he'd allow?
To the south.
Bill owns both sides of the road.
He owns the whole place?
He he owns both sides of the road.
All the way around.
Yeah.
Because that's where your east line is.
That's just stuck.
And Mr. Hanky allow your tenant?
A lot going over, causing compact and truly sold soil already. Neighbor crossing. And another thing about that. If we had to wait till this tenant got the harvest done before we went back in there, and he was out of the late year, and that was the last one. Mine could be on the ground by the time he got his out. So that's been going on for how many years?
Well, it's. I don't know, it's it's crept up as far as the the size of the machinery has just been getting progressively bigger and bigger and bigger. And the replacement rate of the bridges has been, you know, as a as a failure happens, you know, the bridge gets or culvert gets replaced. Or and at that time is when we try to upgrade, do a wider wider one if we possibly can and and that thing. So when you've got these issues of a sound bridge or culvert. It's harder to justify to replace them just because it's not not wide enough due to the increase in the size of the machinery. When we do replace these, we do try to do these upgrades. So and we've been replacing bridges and culverts at the highest rate that we've.
So you do have the science.
Well, we we have been, we had a bridge bond here was four years ago, and but at that. We're doing bridges that are failing bridges, which are the structure critical bridges, which they fall in. I mean, when they fail, they just fall in. So and we have got probably well fourteen, fifteen of those at least on the list yet. But even without that part of it, we've been replacing more culverts and even the last three years, I mean, I can.
And and what do you mean by replacing culverts? Okay, so if your box is falling half off, you know, one side was starting to fall half off, that's.
Completely fail.
Completely fail. That's that's how we're having to do it right now. I mean, we're trying to make plans and do everything, but there's just too many of them that are not big enough for the equipment. I mean, we've got like eighty wooden bridges, and most all of them are ten times, six times.
So we have a farmer who's landlocked because of.
He can't get his.
Somebody else owns all the land around.
Yes.
Okay. So he's between a rock and a and a culvert.
I know you probably have a good relationship with the gentleman that you're you've been renting your ground to. Are there any other options as far as talking to the other gentleman that's going to be renting the adjacent land? Or are there any farmers that have equipment that would be able to use? I'm sorry, what?
I was guessing he would probably farm it, but. I'm not sure. That's what happened. So my brother-in-law and Alex go to my plant.
She was asking if you could, you don't think the other farmer would find a way for you to get through or?
No.
You don't think Bill will?
No. There's no way. There's there are hard feelings out there like you can't believe.
No, I probably can't.
And 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 he's got the upper hand and he's gonna hold. Sorry, but.
No, you're fine. I'm just trying to think of.
So. So I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
So do you even think he would give easement to put something in?
Oh.
Different.
I don't know today, Joe, for sure, but he's the one that originally complained about that.
About the narrowness?
Yes.
The the tenant on bills?
No, Bill.
Bill himself.
Oh.
When he built that new house back there.
Gotcha.
He complained about it, and we went as a group to see about it, and we were told. Bill's told, Dan was told that they was gonna slide a tube through that to get us another, we just have for three, four feet so we could get across the thing. I mean.
Well, and unfortunately, that's what's happened is people in the past, regardless if they're road and bridge superintendent or commissioners. And not necessarily these two, but I'm saying I've had that several times. Well, the previous commission promised me this. The previous commission said that they were gonna pave this little stretch of gravel road, the previous commission, you know, and unfortunately. We can't go by what previous commissioners had said, and a lot of times people say things because it makes less of a problem. Or it's what you want to hear at the time when you're standing out there, but then there's no follow through.
I can't remember the conversation.
You wasn't on the. Committee? No, this has been probably five, six years ago.
I was on the five percent period.
You were?
Well, but well, I've been there since. I know who the individual was that told you that or supposedly told you that. I I don't know. But I've, as a commission, I don't remember ever hearing it at our level from him. So I'm not saying.
He didn't take it to use then.
It it never came to this level.
See?
If if that's.
I had a lot of problems with that gentleman.
Not sure.
With with others things out there. And he just started, he started around things. He he told you to satisfy you, and then that was it. Nothing went forward. And now that with this situation, it's a major problem there. If it would have been addressed like we were told. You know, we should have got it signed document.
Well, and again, if it was addressed like you were told, it would have opened up a can of worms all over the county. That's like, well, why are you doing that? For a perfectly fine structure that's narrow when we're trading our own ground, not to farm it with the neighbors so that they can farm it for us? Because we can't get around without going, either we can't get around, or you got to go twelve miles, or there's so many scenarios people have given me. So I I would say like moving forward, we probably do need to have, I know we have the culvert map of identifying the failing structures and kind of prioritize. That. And then when we get get to the ones that are still in good shape but need to be widened. I mean, kind of like you and I had a conversation the other day, like. The county hasn't progressed with the with the equipment. There hasn't been a plan. There hasn't been, you know, we're talking about that here in the courthouse even, like, what's it gonna look like in five, ten, you know? Equipment just keeps getting bigger. It's not going to get smaller, and we got to begin planning for it.
So are we dealing with a singular solution? Or is there another solution?
Or is there?
You know, it's it's well, it's more than really one problem. It's not just width, because in other instances, it's the the weight, you know, with his stem on it, you know.
There's no, there's no weight problem on this.
On this one, but what I'm saying is.
What you're saying on other bridge.
That when you start replacing a otherwise working culvert for a width problem, well, then the next person would say, well, I need to get across with my semi. I can't. So we we open up the whole, even it gets bigger, and it's not just, I'm not saying that we don't want to give you a tube. I'm just saying that we've got this. Countywide, there's a lot of these structures. I know, again, south of me, south of one hundred and sixteen. George Ritter was climbing over a banister with his dual wheel combine, just going up on the banister to get over. And that's what I thought this was a banister, and I was, well, there's no banisters. You should be able to get across here. So that's what I was hoping.
The tires got to shut on the surface. They can't hang out midair. It's, it's a good way to lose a combine and maybe even get someone hurt. Because it's a what fifteen foot drop?
No, it's a drop.
Or more.
It's a drop.
It's.
I know you want to go with your brother-in-law, but are there other farmers that have equipment that would be able to access your field as is?
There ain't no narrow combines no more.
That's why, but I had an old combine that it was, and then the old combine, and it kept having trouble, and that's why. The combine. The days of using these little combines is gone.
They're mostly in the jump.
Say I'll buy one.
Should we?
We have a.
War out.
I still have one.
The people that stayed in farming has big machines. I'm screwed.
Is your relationship with your neighbor, you think they would allow you to have access?
We talked about that a little bit, the compact of the soil.
That's what you.
It's the last. His fields are the last ones to get combined in the end of the season, and I have to wait till he's gone. Would you please combine yours so I can get to mine? You guys need a plan. You knew you had all these bad bridges, failing bridges, narrow bridges. You should have had a plan ten years ago. We're gonna get this many bridges this year, this many next year. We don't have the money for it. We need to raise the taxes like Donovan County. I paid Donovan County taxes twice as much as it is in Axon County, thankfully. Axon County is lower.
But that's that's over the years. Of course, none of us were here. Probably this needed to be started thirty years ago to be affected. And to get to the level that we need to be at, and this has really expanded since.
Plan. So you're just doing the ones that fail. You don't have a plan for the update, the ones that's not failing. You're just sitting on your ass.
Well, we had a bridge bond, and we put in nine bridges on that in just three years. Was that the the actual?
We had a flood like we had back in sixty four, and some of those years took out half the bridges in the county. Anybody remember those?
I remembered.
Ten inches of rain one night. Just wiped out bridge after bridge after bridge. We got them fixed. But now we can't get this done. I'm sad.
After Gibson.
How many acres drained through that?
How many acres? What?
How many acres drained through that?
Me, me, Bill Hanky's property would drain through there, Dan.
Oh. I don't think that, I think that too. The bridge is probably three times bigger than it needs to be. I don't think that much water.
Well, there's so much conservation work been done since that was established years ago. You know, we don't have the water runoff unless we get a tow stringler. You know, we don't have the runoff like we used to have.
And we still have to go by that.
I know. You gotta go by a chart.
Well, because we do have those tow strangers.
Exactly.
And so.
Happen.
Yeah, but I know what you mean on the a lot of these areas. It slowed the water down so much.
Oh, yeah.
With that, that in most instances, it would work to go with a small.
Right. Because I know I get water off of other people. It goes through my clothes, you know? And the one place is a narrow one. It's a WPA deal. So I go around all the time, but I can go around and get to my property, you know? And it's, it's, it's a bad deal.
It is a bad deal.
And you know, we were promised, which evidently there was nothing in writing. Okay, never happened. Thing was getting by, and now that things change.
Things changed. I quit on my little old combine back there, and then the tenant below got changed. So two things happened that put us in this hard fix. I mean, hard fix.
You have a single combine. Is that what you said, single wheel?
Yeah.
And you measured underneath. So are the.
I measured between the tires and on the outside.
Are duals, is the inside ones?
No.
More narrow?
No.
But you can go across. You're just hanging off.
Exactly.
Okay.
But even with my singles. I'm gonna have a foot of tire hanging off of both sides of the surface of the bridge. So if you get lined up perfect, and you're only running on half of that tire, what happens if that tire blows? That combine gonna end up in a crack. I mean.
That and that's.
There's not, I don't even, and I grade the road, and I'm very cautious when I cross it with motorcade. Because it's so narrow.
The guy that farmed mine won't take his big trailer truck up in there, just on the front of the bridge is right on a curve.
Yeah, it's pretty good turn.
Yeah, it's bad. It's bad. And consequently, like I say, nothing happened previously. Now now then it's a major problem. You know, it was, it was bad, but now it's critical.
Bill Hanky probably or. Bill's probably go long trailer truck. They might be scared to cross it too.
If you got, I I wouldn't cross it with mine, because there ain't enough area. To keep the back wheels. You can get the front end across, but the back end is going to cut across. You know, it's just. It's a bad situation.
Yeah.
Very bad is. And now then it's really, like I say, it's now it's turned into, it's critical. You know, I mean.
It's critical for you to farm.
Yeah.
Well, he can farm, but he can't get by there. You know, far as planters and stuff, they're narrower. When they fold up, you know, they're narrower than a combine by a long shot. Because a combine, the majority of them will take eight, thirty inch roads. Now you figure that out, how wide they are.
Is there any way you could have your, well, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of creative solutions since we can't, well, sorry, I'm one of three, but I can't justify. Without having the plan that you're talking about that we're neglecting to do, making a decision like this, but if. If you could use your tenant and just do the harvest through the other guy, or I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of. I want to help you out. I really do, but we have to have a plan exactly like you're explaining to us, because. Your issue is many people's issues. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people out there that are no fear. And they're doing things that they probably shouldn't until we get the phone call, hey, we went through your bridge and.
Which, what was that about? Do I find her? It's your partner's floor? I don't know whether it's in Donovan County or Axon County.
Tassie County Bridge.
That's what we were just talking.
We were talking about.
It's gonna, we had a weight limit on it for years, which nobody pays in regard to. It's it's a WPA bridge. It's on a corner, line corner on top of that. And I'm sure there's no plans to replace it. It needs. It didn't hit the goal years ago. When they started putting a weight limit on it, should have been in the plan. You know, you've got a plan for it.
I'm curious, as a new commissioner, because I'm still learning things, but as far as planning for those, like, what would you go based on how many people live on the road? Or how many people are using it or school bus access or? Like developing the plan.
The criteria.
Farming equipment.
The yield could be traded off like.
Because that's the hard part, sitting in, sitting in this seat is we want to be mindful of everyone in our district and in our county. And unfortunately, these situations happen more often than we'd like, and. We do have to have a plan, and we have to be able to stick with it and explain to you or the guy next week why we made the decision we made based on the criteria. And and that's why. When we don't have a failing structure and yes, it's dangerous, but could it be done? One guy's gonna tell you yes, and the next guy's gonna tell you I wouldn't touch it. So it's.
I told John Methley, the representative, Highway seven, you guys need to sit out there someday and watch the trailer trucks go by. There's probably fifty or sixty trailer grain trucks go over down that road every day. No shoulder. Top of the hill there where you draw state light, narrow. If someone had come with one of these combines, the same time one of those trailer trucks is coming, sixty, seventy mile an hour, seventy mile an hour. You know, there'd be disaster. And my daughter's a nurse up the hospital, so John knows him. I said, John, you you'd have a sick feeling in your stomach if my daughter or one of her kids got killed on that road. And you guys sit on your ass down there and then get make a shoulder for it. Just sit on your ass. You guys sit on your ass and leave me sitting out there.
So the state don't have a plan either?
Pardon me?
The state doesn't have a plan either?
No. No, but here comes the trailer trucks. It ain't just harvest time. It's all year long. Every day.
Well, I want to help you, but I can't justify putting money into a structure that's not failed. However, I'd be more than willing to help you have conversations with your neighbor or try to find another solution or get creative or. I mean. I just, the the funding is limited. I just, the, the funding is limited and there's needs and failures that we have to have a plan. Back to your advice and I completely agree.
The plan was is to first get these structure critical bridges done, which are the ones that actually completely fall in when they, they have no redundancy built in them. So the older bridges with you maybe have two beams. If one beam fails, the bridge falls in. There's no, you can't, uh, there's no in between. You know, so those are the bridges that, and we're kind of on borrowed time with those. Those require the county to be inspected every year. And at some point, the state may say you've had long enough on them. You're, you're just gonna have to do it. So that's the reason that we've done the bridge bond several years ago and we're making a big attempt and we got nine of those structures off of that, off that list. And we've, and at same time, we've been doing an uptick in culvert replacements. I mean, we've been doing a lot of culvert replacements. So to say that we've really been doing nothing, I, I take exception to that. I know it doesn't help your situation right here. And we do have multiple situations similar to, to yours in, in the county, which I, I hate to say it, but I mean, we do have. So, uh, I don't see any quick fix to this.
But you do like the rest of the government's doing, uh, borrow money?
Well, we did on the, the bridge bonding. That was basically borrowing money and, and, uh, and got, but again, those priority bridges were them structure critical bridges. I don't know at what point we can get to some of these. Which is a different answer for.
The county had their own bridge troops. They's gone every, every year, you know, they'd be down rebuilding bridges, building bridges, building bridges, county did it. Now they put the massive bridge that's built today. That's the back of the roll the pilings and and put up the railing bridges and stuff.
That, that's an excellent point because now when we build a, a bridge, especially uh, anything with much span to it. You know, we were having to build twenty-four or twenty-eight foot decks on them to accommodate these combines. And, and wait for semi, so it's not just building that bridge back. It's, it's a big expansion and that's the reason they cost so much and they, we have to have the engineering and, and have that.
Some of those bridges are bigger than the roads that, that speed them.
Yeah, it looks like you've got a cow path up to a big structure. I, I, I get you, cause I've seen that several times. When I first got on to the when I got to be a commissioner, there was a bridge built just right east of Muskota. I really wasn't a part of it, but that's the first one I went and looked at and it was a, a Husker Steel Bridge. And I thought, man, I wish we had these all over the county. And that was the first bridge I got a complaint on because at that time, I think we put a sixteen foot deck on it. And some, and a major farmer around there says, I can't cross it with my combo. You know, and, and it looked, the bridge looked huge to me, but you know what, that, so since then, everything's been much wider to, when we do do them, we have had to upgrade them.
You're probably familiar with down east of Purdue where they took over the railroad bridge.
Sounds familiar.
Down by John Bones down there.
Yeah.
Lee would just be on the county commission. When the railroad, it went away, the railroad just go through there. When the Cummings down to Potter. Then they abandoned the line and the county took over a rural bridge. Their bridge failed.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have structures to prevent.
Yeah, but it was too narrow, so you guys wanna build a new bridge.
Um, let me, let me ask a couple more. And you're gonna think I'm crazy asking these questions, but I really do wanna find a solution. Um, for you, if there's any way, and again, I don't know the cost. I'm just, my wheels won't stop turning until I try to find a way to help you. If you and your neighbor and maybe the folks farming and maybe Shannon Township, like, I don't know, naming everyone that's affected by this narrowing. Could utilize the county's buying power to order the two, to do something to have somebody do it for you. I don't even know if we can do that on. But I'm just trying to think, how can we help you? And you know, we do get deals on pipe, cause we order in bulk and we order for the townships and different things, like I, I don't know how we can help without.
Maybe the township will help you know, I don't know. We're gonna throw in some money if you guys could do.
You know, if we could.
Well, no one here wanted to tell you, we can't do anything. And the reason why I got ahold of the commissioners right away. I didn't wait. You, you have, you agree with that? Yeah, I didn't, I didn't wait. We got you an answer as quick as we can. Maybe there is something we can look and try to do. I mean, I don't know. It's, it's whatever you guys want me to do. I will try to do, but we're not here to, we're here to wanna help also. We don't wanna cause more problems. We wanna help everybody.
We just don't.
And that's why I came and talked to the commissioners instead of the guy before, but evidently didn't. We're, we're very transparent with each other and we let each other know what's going on. And that's, that's why, that's why I approached them what I did. I didn't wait six months or promise you something that I couldn't give you.
I just hate singular solutions. I wish there was another solution.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what it is.
I think we gotta react to singular solutions.
I'll, I'll.
They're not complaining. They gotta go twelve miles.
No, they just wanna get.
They just wanna get a.
Get in.
Up their road. I mean, if, if you guys want me to, to look at a few options and let you know or.
I can't sway my decision on. I feel like after talking to constituents in my district and other farmers that could get across that span. Um, and it's not a failing structure. It's a conversation for me where I wanna try to help and I, you know, if we could order a pipe for us and work a deal where everybody else pitched in, but we can't, I can't vote to spend money on something that's not failed when we have failed structures that we need to be taking care of.
These failed structures, they're not landmarks. I think I've another access to like the sheer place up there. I think you guys have a decent work on that or township. Um, maybe that's in Dawn. He didn't have a access into the place except for coming in through Addison County. Was the drone for him, drone, sheer lives now. Aren't you, there, there is only access was through Addison County, but the Donovan County road was never gravelled and never maintained.
Yep.
And if you got a nine one one call back there, they had to come into Addison County, which.
Backwards and.
Uh, Donovan County gravelled the road and graded it up and did what they supposed to do, so they would have access from their own county. It's immaterial to fuck this situation.
Well, I don't know. We'll just have to try to think on it and see if we can think of some other solution or, and and I hope you do too, cause I, I can't make any promises. At least today, I mean, cause I don't know what, what we're gonna do, but we're gonna have to move on with our meeting today, but uh, keep in touch and if we think of something, we'll, we'll be in touch with you. Uh, I really don't know what I can, else I can say.
You slip a tube in there or say township and help a little bit or haul the dirt to it or whatever they, whatever they can do. I don't know what they'll really do.
Then we have an easement problem.
How? Well, we have to find out exactly where the right of way line is. Because the records, I believe, the, uh, Roger N came up with was nineteen forty-nine when they abandoned that road that, you remember?
I, I, I don't remember exactly.
But we. We, uh, we've gotta find that out and see if Bill would be even willing to. I'm sure he's not gonna let anybody cut the fence on the, on the south side of the.
Which is probably on county.
Yeah, we don't, you know, that's, you know, that happened so long ago and, and we done all the records that we could find. So, uh, we could look at that and see where it's at and then, uh.
So.
With maybe like Casey said, between all of us, we can possibly brainstorm something to make a solution that everybody can live with. I mean, I don't know. It's whatever you guys.
I think we'd have to get a, a reading of how much water is going through there, cause.
I can find out the acreage from there.
Because that will, if you're putting a some tube through there and cutting the rest of that off, then it can be diminishing your water capacity through there with a culvert, uh, push through there. So that would have to be another thing.
And before we do anything, I have to call K D A and see if it's enough to where it has to be permitted for us to do anything in the ditch.
Let me ask you though, are you gonna do that when we're not going to do?
That's what I'm.
So that's why, well, and it's not, I mean, I'm one person, but if we could utilize our buying power to get them a tube at the county cost for them to split amongst the people that it's affecting, maybe they could do it on their own by hiring someone. I don't know if that's against the rules when it's a county structure, but then it I'm just.
Well, I'll do what you guys.
I just don't know. Like I don't wanna get his hopes up and go through this process when, at the end of the day, if we say no, you're gonna say, well, why didn't you tell me no on March first and wait, you know, like we, we, we need to say something.
Yeah, and that's the reason I prefaced was like, we can't make any promises here today, but some of this stuff might be, we think, well, the solution you say, why don't they just slip a tube? When that wouldn't work if the water office says that don't work or we don't have the easement. I mean, I guess there's some investigative things there we could look at, but then that might say that's not even a possibility if we wanted to do it. So I.
I don't know, are they familiar with the state of that road? You guys, township, fight that out and same landlord and we're dealing with had a fence built on Road Rodeo, is that right Bill?
Still is.
He went, no.
It still is.
And township on the way to the road out.
We surveyed it, had it surveyed. They wanted, he wanted to take the dirt off the other side of the road to, to wind the road. No, he ain't having that.
He wouldn't take his fence out for his side way.
Well, no, he's still not taking that.
Yeah.
We, we let his fence alone, but from where the fence stopped, we took the dirt where we're supposed to come from to build the road up. And you can stand up here today and see, the fence is probably, uh, in areas ten foot out in the road. That's just why you.
And you lost, somehow the right of ways takes this there too.
Yeah.
The township surveyed, but and they state that when they surveyed, the stakes disappeared.
Okay, well, that's, we're gonna have to move on here with our meeting. So is there any?
I'm awake, I'm awake. I just, I'm sitting here dwelling on how we cope with the solution. And, uh, I'm for a solution. But I don't know what the solution looks like or what it costs. So it's easier to say that. Uh, cause we have other people to deal with to, some of our issues.
You don't want us out of here, don't you?
Sounds like you're, no. Just, it sounds like you got a problem with the landlord, the landlords around you too. Cause they, the landlord. And if you could solve that, then you could solve the whole problem.
That'd be great.
I'm not coming out to negotiate with you, with it.
I'm sure they'd buy my place, but I'll pretend that will that to my son. I sure as hell don't believe in the problem.
Yeah.
Alright. Wish we had better answers for you.
Back, oh, I just mentioned it a little bit. Now you probably got an answer on three oh two there. By the cemetery, Doc Albrecht. You should run a tube through that.
Yes.
They come in both ways with tubes.
There was tube on the south side previously that collapsed. That was done, I don't know how many years ago. So then we put that one back and then added another one on the other side because the road was starting to get to where it was falling off. You, you know what I'm talking.
I know what you're talking about. It was straight up and straight down and they wouldn't stand there. They dumped thousands of dollars worth of rock in there and it all went right down the grid.
So.
Cause there's nothing to hold it. And that was a twenty foot drop off. I, I've seen thousands of dollars wasted there, you know? We should have drilled some piling in or did what we finally did there, you know? Back to Dan's up there. If the right of way is forty feet. I don't know what it is. But where we got a fourteen foot top right now.
Right.
If the road's forty foot, can we go slide a tube through there to make it thirty feet? Or what's the regulations and stipulations and all of that? If the right of way is forty.
If the right of way is forty, uh, my main concern is making sure whatever we add on to, that we don't lose anything from erosion. From coming down, you understand what I'm saying? So we can extend it out as long as we're within that right of way, we should be alright, correct Pat? As long as. As long as we're within there, just as long as we can either, uh, either backfill, you know, the ends of it with rock to where instead of taking the dirt and washing it off and, and even out.
We, we, I think we could find a lot of rock to build it up. And then put a layer over the top of dirt over the top, so we can seat it down.
As long as if he's gonna have a problem with the right of way, depending upon where it's at, as long as we stay on the right of way. For you to or whoever, we shouldn't have a problem, I think. Correct?
That's correct. The, what, there's one of the, one of the problems with this is bridge, it was road three sixty-three in the county road records. And, uh, the position of the road does not appear to match exactly with how it was laid out. Uh, and that's where that the east end it curves. Uh, so determining exactly where, where it's supposed to be might be a little bit problematic. But it is, it is laid out as a forty foot road. Forty, forty foot. I, I think we probably need to do the diligence of figuring out what the, what drains into that. Is, is this a six foot square box?
It's really close. It was slick the day I went down there. I think it's like six, six by six foot wide or, I mean, it's I, I wasn't gonna walk. I mean, I walked down there, but it was, there was ice in there when I went in.
Yeah, but the span is seven feet or less?
The height is, the height is six, six to six, uh, but the width is like six, it's six foot two would fit in it.
Okay, so the, but the span would be?
Six and a half. Yeah, six and a half foot wide. I can, I can run out there when we get down to them and but I don't wanna spend time on it if you guys don't want me to, so.
Uh, I think that would answer the question about, I, cause I, I'm not totally convinced that it's a, that it's a county culvert. That it's, uh, because the required opening is what decides that. The fact that there might be an oversized open there doesn't make it our responsibility. Maybe the township's responsibility. So we should probably get that figured out.
Well, it's bigger than the, than the sixty seven ounce square inch.
It definitely is now, but what's required, cause it looks like there's maybe twenty acres or thirty, maybe that drains into it.
From the.
Oh, they have to find out. So, yeah, we should, we should probably do that, but just because there's an oversized culvert does not make it the county's responsibility. Responsibility, cause what we're responsible for is where the required opening is more than twenty-five square feet. And this one is unquestionably more than twenty-five square feet, but I don't know that that's what's required. And especially when you're talking about putting a culvert inside of it, that suggests that it could be something smaller than twenty-five. So we should, we should get that figured out for sure.
Yeah, let's check that out. Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Guys.
We'll keep in touch.
Appreciate it.
Uh, next be. Next be, uh, the minutes, does everyone have a chance to read the minutes from last week?
I did, I'll make a motion to approve.
Spin move in second, all in favor say aye. The passage three to zero. Commissioner comments and committee reports, Jack?
I would just ask everybody to continue to pray for the people ravaged by all the war in Ukraine.
Wow, I don't even know.
I'll forgive you this time.
I don't even know where that came from.
I don't, I don't have any, um, other than Northeast Kansas Environmental came this morning and visited with us. Um, about the process for nuisance and, um, they have a new investigator. Um, so we got to meet Pat Toby and we will be working with him in the future, um, with nuisance.
Okay, just wanna remind everybody that, uh, next week is weather awareness. So keep informed on, uh, and get your radios ready for severe weather. Hopefully we don't have any. Next, Joe Snyder, burn bridge dead opening.
Been openings for chip and seal oil. This one is from Vance Brothers. And it is two dollars and thirty-nine cents a gallon. And that's for approximately a hundred and seventy thousand gallons of CRS dash one HP. Which for everybody will do approximately thirty miles of chip seal. This one is from Ergon Asphalt Emulsions. CRS nice one HP for two dollars and seventy-eight cents a gallon. And those are the only two that we have. And I don't know that if there's a need to wait for a week when we have.
Difference in quality?
No, it's, it should be the exact.
What about transportation?
Transportation. This is all figured in there, and this one. Pump charge if requested to be a hundred dollars, turn me just ninety dollars per hour after two hours of loading time. Fee will be added to the above price at. Uh, with some fifteen cents, fifteen hundreds a gallon, and our bid. Then there shall make delivery, I wanna see if. Uh, price will include the job site in Addison County, will include four hours free unload time. And include pump charge, so we should be. So Adam, you had that figured in yours, correct?
Guys, correct, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Put your terms on that, um, pitch sheet, yeah, uh, freight was to be figured in along with demurrage and, uh, pump charge.
Yes, so, uh, theirs is figured into that two dollars and thirty-nine cents and Ergon has.
It's above and beyond the quote price.
Ninety dollars per hour after two hours of unloading time. No moving charge, return load rate is half the rate, so they have some, yes, but there's almost forty cents a gallon difference. In the price. Yes.
Spin move in second, all in favor say aye.
There you go, did you guys have anything else to ask me?
Okay, the next on the agenda is, um, Joe Phillips with appropriations approval, uh, that has already been approved and we just. Commissioners were asked to sign off on it today, so that's what we got. Uh, county counselor updates. Is there any need for an executive session? Uh, also mentioned there was Mark Wilson, project manager was, uh, on the agenda for resolution for uniform guidance. And that is gonna be put off till next week, we just got a copy of it for the commissioners to read and, uh, uh, read over. So we put that off till next week. So is there any other business?
Just. I go to adjourn at one fifty-six PM.
Spin move in second, all in favor say aye. Adjourn, thank you.